...the boarder to roll call the council first, Sue.
Councilmember Campfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzmann?
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Here.
And Mayor Corr.
I'm here.
Sue, can we do the roll call of the planning commission, please?
Councilmember, Board Member Chambers?
Here.
Commissioner Ellis?
Here.
Commissioner Gudula?
Here.
And we have Commissioners Cadmore, Plank, Schroben, and Cher Barker are all absent.
I'd like to make a motion that we excuse those three. Sorry.
Gudula?
Do we need to vote on it for a yes or no?
Yes or no is fine.
Yeah. Go. All those at the boarder say goodbye by saying aye. Aye. Same for me.
All right, a motion to approve the agenda for the committee of the board?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes or anything we missed? Sue?
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Mayor Corr?
Yes. Assistant Councilman Fred was not on the agenda. Anybody? Is the podium moving in address?
Sure. David Overhall, forty-seven sixteen, South Derby, Sidney, Michigan. I have a family that lives in Lowell, Rutherford, Massachusetts, out of town. I'm about twenty-five, thirty minutes from here. But anyway, I just want to say the same thing I did when you guys left last fall. Thank you for doing this. Appreciate all your efforts, hard work. I know there's been some naysayers in the community, but you guys have stuck to your guns and did what you said you were going to do. And I think your community respects you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sue, you may leave to read.
This was addressed to Steve Bukala. Thank you for taking time to talk to me regarding my concern with establishments that sell marijuana. I know the current ordinance in the state law sets minimal distances from school property. I want to reiterate that I am not in favor of reducing those minimal distances. I have concerns about the unforeseen impact on students and families. Thank you again for always taking the time to discuss such important situations. Greg Pratt, Superintendent of All Area Schools.
All right. Nobody else will go to item four. Regulatory and zoning ordinance. Michael?
Mayor of City Council, Planning Commission. Tonight you're being presented a first draft of a regulatory ordinance along with the recommended zoning ordinance by the planning commission that they're making to you. Both ordinances have been modified to comply with the emergency rules established by the Michigan Marijuana Agency, also known as MRA. What we're going to do is we're going to present to you the regulatory first, and we're going to show you the zoning ordinance. And then there's some issues that have come up regarding more on the zoning end that I think the council needs to at least be advised of. And if we have to make any modifications to the ordinances, we can do that. We should note that November fifteenth of this year, the first applications will be taken by the Michigan Marijuana Agency. So we have enough time that we're going to be able to, should be able to get our ordinances approved. We'd like to have our ordinances, I would think we want to have our ordinances approved so when that day comes, there's really no issues. So I'm going to, you should all have a copy of the regulatory ordinance in your packet. So I'm going to have Jessica, who's here this evening from Dickinson, right, kind of walking through the ordinance, so to speak.
All right. So you've all had, sorry. There's a copy of this draft in your packet, right? So I assume everybody's had a chance to look at it. I know it's long and comprehensive, and we can certainly shorten it up. But that was intentional because I really wanted to just cover all of our bases and just let you know that you have the ability to eliminate a lot of these requirements and really narrow this down. But I thought it would be better to start big and comprehensive and how we can narrow it down if we want to. The reason I think it's important to do that is because here's how this is going to work. Recreational or sometimes called adult use marijuana versus medical. The state is going to start accepting these applications in November, like Mike just indicated. And one of the things they're going to do is look to see if the local units have any ordinance in place prohibiting what the applicant is asking for. If there's nothing in place prohibiting a specific part of a request, they're going to allow it. So you need to think sort of long and hard about what it is you might want to prohibit or regulate or limit. This is your opportunity to do that. If your ordinance is silent on an issue, the state is probably going to allow it. So you just have to make sure you, you know, thought about some issues. And we'll go through this draft and we'll discuss some of the hot button issues, if you will. And just keep that in mind, though, as this gets introduced and then considered for adoption, you know, have you addressed everything you want to? Because the assumption is that the state is going to allow unless you provide it. That's how this is going to work. So as Mike indicated, we've had a draft ready to go, and then the state issued some emergency rules. Those emergency rules were effective July third, two thousand nineteen. They're going to remain in effect for six months, and they could change again. And so we might have some amendments to make later. But they made some significant changes in the rules. They actually added several new types of licenses, which complicates things for Andy and I and for you because we have to try to plan these things even though we really don't have all the details yet. So in addition to all the various state licenses that they're going to allow, including three different classes of marijuana grower, marijuana processor, marijuana retailer, marijuana safety compliance facilities, marijuana secure transporter, marijuana microbusiness, they added different licenses that we'll call special licenses. And those are titled access marijuana grower, marijuana event organizer, temporary marijuana event, and designated consumption establishment licenses. So those are all, you know, a bunch of question marks about how these are going to work. Marijuana special event, you know, we're trying to figure out what that would look like. But that being said, we did our best to take these new terms into account in drafting the ordinances. I don't know if you think it would be most helpful to just walk through it? And I could just highlight some things that I think you need to really pay attention to. I know it's long, but I think we should do it that way?
Yes, start at that one.
Okay, let's do that. I like that. All right. And this, just a reminder, this is the regulatory ordinance. This goes hand in hand with Andy's zoning ordinance. We think legally, technically, this is the way it's to be done. You need to have both, a police slash regulatory ordinance or a licensing ordinance. That's what we're going to consider first. And then there's the whole zoning aspect, and that's the part that Andy's going to focus on. Now, you'll see some overlap between the two, but we think legally you need to have both because zoning ordinances have to go through a special procedure that licensing ordinances don't. And so we think it has to be two parallel tracks, if you will. So let's dive right into this thing.
That's the boarder's conference.
Oh. So a lot of this is purpose and intent. You'll notice on page one, so I'm referring to these as adult use marijuana establishments. And I think Andy changed, yours is going to be adult use as well. I think that's where we're going to do it, okay? You really could refer to it either as recreational or adult use. But adult use sort of emphasizes the fact that this is only going to be legal for people over the age of twenty-one, or twenty-one and over. So I just reiterated the purpose of the law as set forth in the law that was adopted by the voters. So I don't know if you have any questions about this, but of course, we always want to reiterate that our primary objective here is to protect the public health and safety through reasonable limitations. And that's our number one priority here. To impose and defray and recover the cost to the extent that you're allowed to under the law. You have to coordinate your laws and regulations with the state because they're licensing and you're licensing. So there's this dual track. And it also, it addresses the various types of licenses. And then it also addresses the fact that, the thing that's particularly tricky about this issue is that, of course, under federal law, marijuana is still illegal. So we find ourselves in a sort of unusual situation.
I have a question.
Yes.
Page three, number three, I see the word hemp. And that confused me. And maybe I'm misunderstanding hemp.
Hemp has a separate definition within the law. And it has to do with, I mean, it's legal under some agricultural laws that are in effect.
Well, that's why I was surprised that it showed up here because I didn't think, I thought hemp and marijuana were two different things. You can't recreate with hemp.
You can't, that's right, you can leave things.
I mean, plastic, man.
That's right. And the purpose of this subsection three is simply to say that, look, we don't intend to grant you immunity from any type of civil or criminal prosecution under any of the other laws that encompass marijuana or hemp. So we just kind of, it's just a true matter thing there. We can't protect you from any sort of prosecution just because we're allowing you here in the city. That's the gist of that. And because hemp is dealt with separately in different statutes, we just do that as well. But you're absolutely right. The gist of this ordinance has nothing to do with hemp. Yep. All right, just going to keep moving on unless anyone else has anything else to ask, feel free to jump in. So also in the recitals here, by issuing a license under this chapter, the licensee potentially, if the licensee, has to release the city from all liability and indemnify the city for any type of liability that could result from any sort of arrest or prosecution, et cetera. So again, this is just to err on the side of caution, given that this remains a federal, you know, offense. And again, anyone who accepts a license issued by the city potentially has to indemnify, defend, hold harmless the city, its officers, elected officials, employees, insurers, et cetera. So at that point on page four, we jump into the definition section. These definitions might seem excessive, but they all are sort of nuanced and take on their own significance, and they all come from the act itself. So I won't spend too much time on them. If you have any questions, let me know. Again, they don't become relevant until you look at some of the other provisions and you say, oh, well, like for example, marijuana event organizer is the only type of person who could be licensed to get a temporary marijuana event license. So you might have to refer back to the definition if you have any questions. That's why this is so detailed. So true party of interest, again, that only comes into play later when you're trying to evaluate the application. So I go into a lot of detail there because it is that specific in the state law. So that's why it's in there. And if you have any questions about how to process an application, you might actually need to know, you know, who a true party of interest is. So at the bottom of page seven, you've got license application process. And this is the part where I really need you to focus and sort of consider how you want to do this because there are a number of different ways to do this. My understanding and how I set this up is that, sort of to keep it as simple as possible, this is going to be perhaps a first come, first served sort of thing. Just like you guys, you get your applications in, you date and timestamp it, and we're going to do it that way. As opposed to, and you tell me if you disagree with that, there are other communities who have made it a lot more complicated than that, who have point systems that you have to fill out questionnaires and so forth. And they're going to give preference points to applicants who are local residents or applicants who have an established business or live in underserved communities or... So there's all sorts of different ways to cut this, really. But this is just designed to say, you know, you have to have a complete application, and they're going to be considered in an order in which they are received. Now, what's the downside to doing that? I suppose there could be a mad rush of applications, and that was a concern certainly in some of the larger cities, that, you know, people would be kinked out for miles. I don't know if that's a realistic concern or not, but it's something for you to consider.
There's not a lot of communities on this side of the state.
Allowing it.
Right.
Right. So you might, you might get, you know, a plethora of applicants. Again, and I can speak to how Grand Rapids did it, so, for medical, which is at least analogous. And that is, they had to be filled out sort of a point system checklist indicating some of those things I just did. You know, if you're willing to essentially meet or comply with certain environmental standards or so forth, or hire locally, these types of things. And the more of those boxes that you check, the more points that you would get. And that would determine which half your application was put in. And then the half that had the highest number of points, they would pull the applications out and process those first. So I know that sounds complicated, but it was supposed to be the most objective way to deal with the anticipated large number of applicants. So I don't know if you're worried about that or not. I can tell you that almost every process has been challenged legally so far. I mean, there's a lot of money at stake here. And so, you know, in terms of what we recommend, I think the important thing is that you have to treat everybody the same and that your criteria has to be really straightforward and you can't be arbitrary per legal, obviously.
Something else, I took a call today from somebody who's in the industry. And we were, he was going through, he actually went and reviewed our ordinance. And one of the things he brought to my attention, something to think about, was, he said, look, I'm in the, I'm in the business, so I profit from this. He said, but the way, he said, you run the risk, he said, with your ordinance, the way it is right now, without some, he said, he said, without some type of a separation between businesses, and right now our ordinance doesn't call for that. He said, without a separation of businesses, he says, even though it's a small area of land, he goes, you run the risk of every single property being sold and becoming a marijuana business. He said, he goes, he goes, stranger things, basically in this conversation, stranger things have happened. And he just, he just asked, he actually asked the question, is that what the city wants? So that part of where we're kind of asking you as to what you, you know, we're kind of giving you these things out in front so you can tell us what you want so we know how to deal with it when they come along. So that was, that was kind of our discussion. And my, and my counter response to him was, I said, well, look, this is a very small area. Part of it is, we obviously want, you know, we want, you know, we want capitalism to prevail just like anywhere else in the sense that, you know, the ones that make it will make it, and the ones that don't, don't. I said, but the, but the other issue I have is trying to determine, you know, who goes where, how many you select. All I said, part of that is, is that's the argument she's discussing about is those are getting challenged. And so we're trying to do everything we can to try and risk lawsuit to the city while trying to institute this. So those are things that you're going to need to think about.
Mike, were we going to try to restrict the number of X, how many distributors, how many growers, so therefore maybe not all properties would therefore become up for sale and then would become a store?
We could have to allow one of each type, right?
That's what I'm saying.
You have to allow a minimum of one of each type of business.
See, and I would actually take issue with that. I think it's great, just so you know. I think that there's, and it's not clear, and there's a lot of discussion about this on the, just so you know, on the list about if you have to allow all the types or if you're allowed to prohibit certain types. So that's an area that's super gray, just so you know. But Mike brings up a good point, and that is that we've got the three main issues. One is your application process. The next one is your locations that you're going to allow it and whether you're going to buffer them. And that's really an Andy topic. But if you want to buffer them or if you want them to just, anything goes, right? As long as they're within the zone, you don't care if they're buffered. Some people kind of get preferable to have them clustered in terms of, you know, efficiency and safety and policing and all that. So, and the other thing, the number, are you going to put a cap on them or not? So are you going to just naturally let it play out and when the property's gone in that zone, the property's gone? So those are really the major decisions. But going back to the application process for a minute, if you find any of these two onerous, they can certainly come out. Like, for example, some of these make sense, but these do, in order for the application to be considered complete, I've defined it really tightly so that they have to tell you, you know, show you their financials, tell you whether they've ever applied for or been granted a commercial license, whether they filed for bankruptcy. You know, you don't have, if you feel like that's too invasive, you can take that out. Okay? It's just, this is in here again so that you, it's easier to cross things out than it is to think about it later. So even though this is first come, first served, I, there are a lot of criteria in here that can come out. So please look at the application process.
Is this similar to the hoops you have to jump through to get a liquor license or is it more?
Well, the liquor license procedure is pretty much preempted by the Liquor Control Commission, and you do have to do a lot to get a liquor license. But the support zone, the state deals with most of that. So, but I would say they're similar. It's just the question is, do you want to be doing this locally? And again, there were some communities who felt like, yes, we want to examine these applicants to death. So it's really just a policy call, you know, decision. How much do you, how much discretion do you want to have in processing these? Or as long as they show you that they're not in default arrears on any taxes or fees, I mean, that's a no brainer. You leave that in, right? And as long as they go on to show you that they're in proper zoning context, are you good? So you're going to have to look at those application procedures and decide how thorough you want to be in your review. That's really up to you. All right, location eligibility, and that's what Mike just sort of touched on at the bottom of page eight. As part of this process, they're going to have to go through the special land use process as well. So that's a whole other process. And so this is just tied to that. And you have to decide, again, within the context of Andy's discussion and his ordinance, whether you want to put a limit on the number and whether you want buffers or not. If you're wanting to all locate together naturally, so.
Chief?
From your standpoint, would you prefer they were clustered or not?
I don't have an opinion on that.
Okay.
Buffers can get complicated, too, because it sort of reminds you of like a pool game. I mean, so you get people in line for their application to be processed. If you approve one, then boom, depending on your buffer, you've just eliminated properties all around it, right? And somebody may have already purchased property within that area. So, I mean, that's not your fault, it's not your problem. But just so you know, buffers really limit where people can go. So just keep that in mind. So this just refers to the location eligibility that we'll have to go through from the planning commission's standpoint. License and annual fee required. So they'll have to apply for a business license just like any other business in the city. It will be an annual nonrefundable license application and a nonrefundable fee of five thousand dollars per license. That's the amount that is allowed in the statute. It's up to five thousand, so you know, but most people are charging five thousand because they think it's going to cost them that much to process these.
I should get more people who are serious, wouldn't you?
Right. If you can't afford the five thousand dollar fee, you probably can't afford to comply with the state's prequalification requirements. Yep, so that's a big red flag. So again, just a lot of sort of cautionary language. Just because you get a license under this chapter doesn't mean that you have a defense or an immunity to any other potential criminal liability under federal law. I have to keep referring back to that.
So each one of the different kinds of businesses files?
Different, right?
But they all pay the same amount?
Five thousand dollars, yes.
And that's annual, that's nonrefundable, it's just a process. And that's in addition to the fees that they will pay under the zoning ordinance. So general license application requirements. Again, they can submit an application to the city on forms provided by the city. I have a pretty nice draft going of a form. I think that's a nice noninfractory way to do it. Fill out a form with some basic information, which they have to sign under penalty of perjury. Basic business license stuff, you know, name, address, date of birth, type of business entity, identity of every person having an ownership interest. If the applicant is not the owner of the actual property, then you need an honorized statement from the owner of the property authorizing the use of their property for marijuana. Just because you want to make sure landlord and tenant are on the same page. So again, feel free to look at this. Some of this could go if you wanted it to, like a copy of the deed reflecting the applicant's owners above or lease reflecting the write-off. But I think there's good precautionary measures to make sure, again, landlord and tenant are on the same page you want this to happen on the property.
I have a question regarding section seven, a security plan. We had this conversation at our board today. Are you talking about physical security or what do you mean by an actual security plan? When they talk about that, are they talking about cameras, security, technical building? I mean, what, what are they actually talking about?
I mean, I think really both. I think, but, and Andy touches on this a lot, too, but the statute calls for a security plan.
Right.
And you raise a good point, it's like, well, what does that mean? Primarily it means cameras and those types of things. It could certainly mean a security guard as well. You know, locks, those types of things. And that's because we're going to be dealing with a lot, large amounts of cash. Remember, they can't keep this money in banks.
Actually, you can.
Can you?
Yeah, there's two in the state.
Two banks?
Yeah.
Okay, so a few banks.
Just a couple.
Just a couple. There will still be a lot of cash as well, I'm saying. So that's why the security plan issue keeps coming up.
Yeah, they asked us, because our company does securities when they were asking us today, what does that plan look like? And we have no idea what it should look like in this moment.
Right.
The administrative rules talk a little bit about some of those things that are required in a security plan in terms of locks, cameras, down to the resolution of the picture that the cameras must record. So there is a fair amount in there about physical security, but it doesn't talk about, like, computer networking security or anything like that. It all, I think, so, but yeah, it's primarily related to the physical security of the city.
Something of note, and one of the, one of the concerns we had, I had, is that once they submit these security plans to the city, whether it be FOIA or not, so we, under the, under the Freedom of Information Act, we do allow provisions for trade secrets to be protected and so forth. So we would constitute it under that part of the, of the act because next thing you know, one of these businesses will file, file, and then once you're, you know, they want FOIA security plan, well, I, I, it defeats the purpose for security if that happens.
Well, and the statute does have a provision that provides some protection from, or exemption from FOIA. So to the applicant. All right, let's see, lighting plans, again, this all goes to security for grower and processing establishments, plans that specify the methods to be used to prevent the growth of mold and discharge of wastewater. So just more details about, and this mostly comes from the statute, honestly. Let's see here, proof of insurance. Licensees shall at all times maintain full force and effect for duration of their license and workers' comp and all that good stuff. And has to provide proof of insurance to the city clerk. They have to indicate whether they've been indicted for, charged with, arrested, convicted, et cetera. However, prior criminal history checks are somewhat limited, actually. However, prior criminal history checks are somewhat limited, actually, by state laws. There are some limitations to what you can review. They're particularly concerned with folks who have criminal history related to marijuana, to not penalize them. And so that, that's why there's this sentence under ten about, will be addressed consistent with the provisions of the MRTMA. Let's see here, again, I don't wanna just read this, but word for word. Description of the type of establishment and the anticipated or actual number of employees. That's a good thing to know, I guess, if you're considering the economic impact on the city. You're allowed to do a criminal history check. I refer here to any additional information that the community development department reasonably determines. I know you guys don't have, they have the community development department. Your website refers to mine. So anyway, the point of that is that any department you want can have the opportunity to have these applications streamlined to them, so, to do a review. Let's see here, denial of application. So the city clerk can deny anything that doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance, and then there's a whole lottery list, the rules that are promulgated by LARA, and which might change, or anything that contains false, misleading, or incomplete information. So, let's see here. So how it's currently set up is that once the clerk receives the application, they'll do this review and issue a provisional marijuana establishment approval certificate, if all these different things have occurred. At which point, and Andy and I went back and forth about this a little bit, they'll have to go back to the state at some point, because how it's gonna work is they'll vote the state initially for pre-qualification, essentially. Then they'll come to you and see, I mean, presumably it could happen this way, see what sort of ordinance you have in place, and see whether they think they can comply with everything, both zoning and regulatory. And then they have to essentially guarantee to the state that, yeah, we can comply with this. We looked at the local rules and we're good to go here. So they need to go back to the state for their state license. And then they come back to you for a final license to begin, to open their doors for business, essentially, after a final inspection. So there's a little bit of back and forth that goes on here, and we try to take into account what's most reasonable for the applicant, right? Because they're probably not gonna wanna spend a ton of money upfront without at least a provisional approval from you. So it's sort of walking a tightrope here to figure out what is most efficient for the applicant, but what protects the city as well. Bearing in mind that they have to get approval from, two approvals essentially, from the state and two from you, provisional and final. So the timing is a little bit complicated, but I think that's the most efficient way to do it. So, so once they've gone back to the state and said, we comply with everything that the city says we need to comply with, then they come back to you and they get a final inspection and they get their final business license and they can open their doors. So.
Is there a timeframe that this takes place, is it thirty days, sixty days, or it's just when it happens?
Well, they need to commence operations within one year of you issuing a license to them.
Okay.
So.
The applicant does?
Yeah, they need to open their doors by then. And if they stall out, then they forfeit their license, and they would have to start over, so. We think a year would be enough time for them to get everything in order. Their license here runs concurrently with their state operating marijuana license, unless it's revoked. It can be renewed annually, they have to do another renewal application and pay the fee, and they should do that at least thirty days prior to the date of its expiration, so that there's no lag time in the business. And again, they have to leave to inscribe, so that's gonna be key, you know, to make sure that they're complying with everything. The, the business license that you would issue is valid only for the owner named on the license and for that type of business. So it's not transferable to other property owners and it's not transferable to other types of marijuana businesses. Each one is so different that that makes sense. And then we just reiterate here that an operating license granted by the city is a revocable privilege granted by the city and is not a property right. So just like any type of business license, if they're no longer in compliance with your requirements, it could be revoked. That's another reason to do a regulatory as well as a zoning, because these are a little more straightforward. I think people are familiar with how business licenses work, and it's an easy framework to sort of really.
Is it the state or the city that does the audit so that they're compliant? And how often do they do that audit? Or are they just out of the blue, come in, audit your books today or whatever?
The city has the right to, wait, you mean audit like financials?
Well, not just that, no, just to make sure that they're in compliance with all of this. Let's say their business is second year, can you call in audit to make sure they're still compliant? Is that done by the state or the city?
Well, the state will do it for their purposes, for their license. And the way this is drafted, the city could do it for the purposes of their, the local license. Yeah, again, it's like a two-track, so. And you can sort of do as much or as little as you choose to do as a city.
They pretty much have to track everything. I mean, I read through this to the best of my ability, and it looks like they have to account for everything that goes in and out, right? To the state?
They do.
Yeah, state will say.
It's pretty heavily regulated at the state level. Again, so, but the state recognizes that this is new to everybody and gives you some real leeway and discretion to determine how much you wanna regulate it as well. So, it's really up to you. But again, what you don't prohibit, the state will allow, as long as their requirements are met, so.
I think I read in here that the applicant agrees that the city can inspect at any time without a search warrant.
Yeah, we tried to address that, yep. Yep. So non-renewal, suspension, or revocation of license, again, this should sound much like any other business license. You know, if, after notice and hearing, which is just standard due process, the city could suspend, revoke, or refuse to renew a license if, if they're out of compliance, and that's on page seventeen. All right, so now we get into the different types of licenses, and these requirements, if you'd rather, we can just, we could get rid of these specifics and just refer to the MRTMA, but I sort of spelled them out in here, just so you know. Which, that would cut down on the length of this ordinance a little bit. But this comes right from the statute. So for a grower license, here's what the state statute requires.
Do you? I kinda feel like you keep encouraging us to shorten it, but I, I'm looking at it thinking, are we better off having all these basics covered? I mean, do you, do you think we should be cutting this stuff out 'cause it's redundant? Or are we better off being redundant?
We've had, we've had this discussion for a while.
Just a matter of preference.
It's a matter of really, yeah, I mean, it's very, one of the things you're, you do run the risk is, they're gonna, they're gonna make changes to the rules, and your ordinance could be, could be, for a period of time, your ordinance could technically not comply with.
Could be outdated.
Yeah, could be outdated, so that, you know, you run, you're on, you're on the fact that you always have to, you're gonna always have to modify it, depending on how often the state guidelines change. The other, you know, the other, the other flip of the coin is, is that it's, you know, the, the, the state, you know, the MRTMA spells out what you can and can't do. So I was, you know, when I first looked at this, I was, I looked, I was like, well, the MRTMA already says these things, why are we, why are we putting them, why are we reiterating them? When all we really have to do is just refer to the MRTMA. So it's really however you want it.
So if they make changes to that, then, then we don't have to spend as much time changing that, just whatever the revision is an update or.
That's right, exactly.
Well, the state, why are we?
Yep.
There is something we can hear throughout, peppered throughout though, that says, consistent with the MRTMA and LARA rules as they may be amended. So I try to keep defaulting to that so that you wouldn't be, they wouldn't be out of compliance necessarily. You would just have to always make an effort. Of course, the downside of not including all this is that whoever's administering this has to always stay up to date with the state, state regulations, state law, so.
If we don't put the, this extra language in, right?
Right, I mean, I guess this is one area where I feel like it could be condensed, is where I described the requirements of each type of license. The rest I sort of like, to be honest with you, to have it in there. But the license types and all the requirements, I think you could refer just to the MRTMA and the law, right?
To me, that just seems to make more sense, because if they're gonna change on the state level.
We're just referring to that?
Yeah, we're just referring to that, we, that can just respond.
Okay, so condense the parts that deal specifically with the license requirement. That's an easy fix.
You mean the types of license?
The types, the types, that's what I mean, yeah, yep, yep. And actually, that's what I had to do when I got to special licenses on page twenty-three, because we just don't even know how those are gonna play out yet. I mean, they, they just dropped those on us, and so, you know, shall be as dictated by the LARA rules, you know. So that's sort of what we did there.
So you could just put that language under all the other?
Yeah, yeah, and I could just refer specifically to that part of the statute. That was simply, I didn't even shorten it later. All right, that's an easy fix, it'll cut a few pages off this. Okay, if you have, you might. Okay, so twenty-three, page twenty-three, licensee shall strictly comply with the rules and the emergency rules that may from time to time be promulgated by the Department of LARA. So they're required to comply with any sort of statewide monitoring system of inventory control tracking. It's all up to the state, but worth mentioning in here. They are subject to inspection, search, and examination at any time by a member of the law, well, should see a state police department, so, or Department of State Police. Pretty much everyone has that in their ordinance. Signage and advertising, I seem curious how you guys talked about this a little bit already, but this refers to your existing sign requirements. Essentially, you know, they have to comply with all applicable provisions of the code, including when that referred to any sort of sign ordinance that you already have. Now, there are some limitations in what you can do when it comes to signage, and those are still being fleshed out, but the statute actually specifically addresses that and sort of limits what you can do. And there's a case called Reed, the Reed case in Arizona, which actually severely limits how much you can dictate the content of the sign says. So that's a whole nother discussion, but signage and advertising, that, that's something that we'll have to flesh out in implementing this. Let's see here. Warning signs, just every, every establishment is gonna have to post something that says, you know, that the possession, use, or distribution of marijuana is a violation of federal law, that you can't drive a motor vehicle or operate machinery when under the influence of or impaired by marijuana. And no one other is going to want it permitted in the premises, so.
Is this a sign of those outside the facility or inside?
These would be.
Well, then no one allowed on the premises to be on the door, right? Or on the window next to the door?
Both inside. I think here, I'm taking up a lot of time, I know.
Here it gets into the security thing.
A little more details about security, yep.
Cameras.
Has to be in good working order, has to comply with the LARA rules. Cameras, use of safe for storage, and an alarm system. Visibility of activities and control of emissions, these are found within the statute as well specifically, but they're very limiting, and they essentially don't want things to be viewable from outside. So things have to be conducted within the building and not in public view. Let's see here, obviously they have to provide sufficient measures and means of preventing smoke, odor, odors, debris, dust, fluids, and other substances.
Does it give a, does the state say how, or do we have to put it in zoning? How far away from the building can the smell be?
They don't wanna say a reasonable, the property line, somebody with reasonable sensitivity or something like that.
And injured on the neighborhood, reasonable use of their property.
Right, it's a very murky standard, unfortunately. But it really depends, I think the concern about all these things dealt with here, smoke, odors, debris, dust, fluids, and other substances, really depends on the type of operation that you're talking about. A grow facility is gonna have a lot more concern, I think, raise a lot more concern than just like a, you know, retailer or somebody just selling it in a regular storefront. So I think a lot of these concerns go specifically to grow, more than anything, but. Cultivation is dealt with on the next page. Limits the type of lighting that they can use and so forth. And again, that's cultivation, and that deals with gas, vapor, odors, et cetera. And then, yeah, here we, we speak to odor control, but again, this is sort of murky and it is definitely a little bit tough to measure, but they are not allowed to permit the emission of marijuana odor from any source to result in detectable odors that lead to premises upon which they originated, and interfere with a reasonable and comfortably usable instrument of another property, so. Murky, subjective standard, but that's what the law provides us with right now, so.
And that odor control is only for these businesses, not somebody smoking it off their porch that interferes with the homeowner?
Yeah, that's a, that's a different issue, yeah, this is, yep, this is business, what businesses have to do.
Don't they make a fancy little tool that sniffs the air? I think we looked at it once for the bio-babies.
We did?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a fan, I don't really know how it works, but there's some sort of device that apparently can detect the odors. We'll get into that a little bit on the zoning side, we had some actual examples of ways that they're required to control odors, but there's also an exception in zoning for some other way. But we're more concerned about the outcome than how they get there.
Okay, so moving on, prohibited acts, I guess I wanna point this out, so these might seem obvious, but I think you'd be happy to know that the state has no intention of issuing marijuana licenses to an existing business that has another type of state business license. So in other words, you're not gonna be able to combine the consumption of like alcoholic beverages and marijuana at one place, because that would require two different types of state licenses. And they said they're not gonna do that. 'Cause I know that, that question's come up a lot, like, well, is every restaurant gonna start selling this, or every bar? And they're not gonna be allowed to legally, since you can have, if they issue you a license, a marijuana license, that's what your business is going to be doing. So, I think it gives some people some comfort, you know, with that issue of.